Welcome, everyone. The time is 7:30. I call the January 21st meeting of Yardley Borough Council to order. Please stand for the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heard someone coming up the steps. If it is not Judge Chronicle, we... It is. There we go. She knows how to make an entrance. So we are going to move up the appointment of Police Officer First Class Jake P. Kolczynski, number 100, to our first order of business. Those who have been members of the Yardley Borough community recognize him and we're excited to make it official this evening. So Chief Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. And as I've said in the past, being a police officer is normally a very, very tough job, but on nights like tonight, it's a very, very rewarding job when we get to either promote, appoint, or commend our police officers who do such a great job in Yardley Borough. History on this agenda item, Officer Jake P. Kolczynski was appointed as a part-time Yardley Borough Police Officer during COVID on March 3rd, 2020. Officer Kolczynski was appointed as a full-time police officer from a competitive list of qualified applicants resulting from a Borough Civil Service Commission Examination on January 2nd, 2024. In accordance with the collective bargain agreement between Yardley Borough Police Department and the Borough of Yardley, Officer Kolczynski's probation year expired on January 2nd, 2025. Prior to that date, Kolczynski was formally recommended for full-time permanent employment by me in writing, without objection by the Borough Council Public Safety Committee. Officer Kolczynski is the recipient of two unit citation awards and one memorandum of commendation. Since his full-time appointment last January, Officer Jake Kolczynski has handled 1,789 calls for service, issued 220 traffic citations, maintained the equipment for all newly hired YBPD officers, and assisted with their field training, handled the coordination of police vehicle maintenance with outstanding results, has strengthened existing relations for residents and businesses alike, continued to help conduct background investigations on newly hired police officers and auxiliary police officers, and has received no internal affairs or citizens complaints, and has conducted himself in representation of all our department's core values. During this probationary period, Officer Kolczynski has been evaluated by his supervisory chain of command. Officer Kolczynski received the grade of outstanding performance by his corporal with concurrence of his sergeant. On behalf of the Public Safety Committee of Yardley Borough Council, I hereby request a motion that Officer Kolczynski be retained as a full-time civil service police officer effective 1/21 and be appointed as a Police Officer First Class, consistent with other full-time Yardley Borough police officers.
Do I hear a motion to that effect?
I've moved.
Is there a second? Motion is made by Councilperson Segal Morris, seconded by Councilperson Share. Any discussion from council? Any discussion from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Madam President, we also have our magistero District Justice Corinne Chronicle with us tonight to help with Officer Kolczynski swearing in to fill in for Mayor Horning. Judge?
Your Honor, welcome.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Sir, do you want us to move this table?
Uh, yeah.
Do they want the flags? Chief, do you want the flags?
Yeah, we'll be here.
Thank you. Good? We don't usually use a Bible, do we? Sideways. There you go. Perfect.
I'm good at speaking loud, so I don't need to make a phone call. Okay, are we ready to go?
We are, Your Honor. Thank you.
All right, so I'm just gonna ask you to repeat after me then, okay? I have a nation to read right now. So I state your name.
I, Jake Kolczynski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
Uphold the laws and ordinances.
Uphold the laws and ordinances.
Of the Borough of Yardley.
Of the Borough of Yardley.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of a civil service police officer.
Of a civil service police officer.
First class.
First class.
Of the Borough of Yardley.
Of the Borough of Yardley.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
And to the best of my judgments and ability.
And to the best of my judgments and ability.
Kolczynski family, and happy birthday, Mr. Kolczynski.
And a present.
And if we could have the Yardley Borough Police Officers, Auxiliary Police Officers, and former police officers come on.
Email.
We're joined by a number of those people.
Hello, how are you?
Everybody look here first. Now look this way. And one more. One, two, three. Awesome. Thank you all for coming. Jake is by somewhere. Coach, your dad's right there.
Thank you, sir. Chief is a little slow.
No problem.
Easy.
Always here to help.
Thank you very much.
No problem. You all have a good night.
All right, Manager Johnson, let's back it up to roll call, please.
Ms. Thompson. Ms. Share. Mr. Finer. Ms. Segal Morris. Mr. Stump.
President.
Mr. Applebaum.
Here.
With seven members present, we have a quorum. We'll move on to community announcements. Does any member of council have announcements about upcoming events in the borough? Any members of the public have any community announcements this evening? Hearing none, we will move on to public comment. This is the portion of the meeting where members of public can approach council, state their name and address, and address council on matters not on the agenda. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes per matter. Any public comment this evening? Going once, going twice, closed. We'll now consider the consent agenda dated January 21st, 2025, which just includes the minutes from January 7th, 2025. Since there's only one item, we'll go ahead and.
Madam President.
Vote on that, yes?
I did find some errors. Do you want me to ask you to pull it out, or just?
Errors can be corrected. We can still vote on them, and then during discussion, you can bring them up and they'll be corrected before they're posted. Do I hear a motion to approve? Is there... The motion was made by Councilperson Segal Morris, seconded by Councilperson Share. Discussion from council or corrections?
Yes. Under public comment number Roman numeral four, Martha's name is spelled wrong. Could you just spell your last name, Martha? I don't think it's spelled H-A-L-L-E-T.
Close. H-O-W-L-E-T-T. Got it?
And I think I saw one other, and I'm sorry I didn't have it open. I apologize. Let's leave it go. Oh, yeah. Nope, no, I'm good. Thank you.
Yeah, any other changes you find by tomorrow morning, you can send them to Manager Johnson and Mary Ann, and they will make sure they are applied.
Thank you.
Any other comments on the minutes? Any public comment on the minutes? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 601. You have before you the January 21st, 2025 finance report. Any issues, changes, questions? Otherwise, it will be accepted by consensus. Thank you. Our first order of business is from General Government, the short-term lodging discussion and options. Councilperson Carlson, please.
As you all recall, back on December 3rd, we had, you know, significant discussion on this topic. So what I wanted to do today, the goal today is to show, I incorporated changes that we talked about back on December 3rd, and then came up with three options. And the goal here would be to decide on option A, B, or C, which I'll present in a minute, and then based on one of those being passed through, then turn on the solicitor to clean up the preliminary draft to incorporate these small changes that we proposed on either A, B, or C, and then get it on, moved on to get both Borough planning and Bucks County Planning Commission comments, hopefully during February, so that we can get a proposed final ordinance ready to advertise by the second meeting in February and get a vote by March. So that's, that's the game plan tonight. I'd like to run through the next three slides just to refresh your memory on what we, what was in the first draft and a few changes to it that are in blue. And then I'd like to describe the three options before we decide on how we want to vote on it. The only change we made in the definitions of, in the short-term lodging ordinance is that we said that the draft ordinance now calls for a seven-night minimum if we decide to allow rentals, entire home rentals in residential zones. Otherwise, it's the same as what we talked about before, entire home rentals in commercial industrial zones with a two-night minimum. And then obviously, if you have a specific bedroom accommodation where you're really renting, just renting out bedrooms in your home where it's owner-occupied, you do not have those requirements of the seven or two-night. Next slide, please. For either option A or B, which you'll see in a couple of slides, the draft will still contain the short-term lodging annual licensing process, similarly to lower make fields, inspections at the beginning of the initial application and annually thereafter. Modified the guest for, for the unit to be two guests per bedroom plus one additional person per bedroom. So if you have a two-bedroom rental, that would be a maximum of six people, two in each bedroom plus one extra in each bedroom, more reasonable number. Property liability assurance, make sure you've paid all your lodging taxes as well as sales and use. We've kept the minimum of 10 short-term lodging licenses permitted for year one, something that will be revisited in future years. And licenses will not be granted for a budding property, so you don't end up with a whole street full of, of short-term lodging. And then an annual view by council determine the quantity of locations following year. Additional parameters, didn't change anything here. The parking will be off-street, and it'll be, when you apply for your license, you'll identify how many parking spaces you have that are available for the short-term lodging, and that's the max you can have. You got to make sure it doesn't conflict with any homeowners association rules. We have a couple of homeowners associations that don't allow this at all, so obviously that takes precedence. And extra things to be done, extra instructions to be posted, et cetera, in the agreement and posted in the unit for floodplain area locations. Local contact person must reside within 20 miles and/or one-hour drive of the rental unit so that there's a person to deal with issues as they come up. And they got to keep a ledger to make sure the length of stay and how many people have come and gone, as well as a very detailed process for suspension, revocation, and non-renewal license. Basically, the penalties if you don't follow all these rules. Okay, so this is the, the last page, and what I want to describe is the three options here, and then we can, you know, entertain motions to adopt one of these. Option A is short-term rent, short-term lodging. If you're doing entire-home short-term lodging, have it be limited to commercial industrial zones only, two-night minimum, no maximum nights per year. So option A says yes. Option A is really what we allow today. It's allowed in the commercial zone, but it's putting rules around them in terms of, you know, getting licenses and inspections and all those kinds of things. But it basically doesn't change where you can do them, because you can do them there today. Option B, obviously, is the same as option A for the first bullet, first two bullets. Obviously, except the, the short-term rent in, in option B is allowed in all zones, so includes residential. But if you do an entire-home short-term lodging in a residential zone, requires a seven-night minimum rental and no more than 90 total nights per calendar year. The rationale behind the 90, from my perspective, is that's basically three months. So you could have, if you, if you're going to have a rental in a residential area, you could conceivably rent it weekly for the summer for three nights, or the winter for three months. But then the rest of the time, you can, you have to have people in there that stay more than 30 days. So that's, that's the proposal there. And then in that scenario, an additional requirement is only one residential rental property allowed per block. So option B is the most liberal interpretation, if you will. And then option C, I just wanted to put up there that I think we should kind of make sure we vote on first. Option C says do nothing, and says, don't do anything. Don't create a new, new ordinance. Don't add any new regulations, but just keep zoning as it is, which allows rentals of less than 30 days only in the commercial industrial zones. But it does not have all the other regulations that you saw in the three previous pages on it. So I'd like to see that we can get, if we get four votes for one of those three options, we can then move the, move this on to the next step and turn on the solicitor to do, clean up the words on the actual document that you, I sent you all last time, and then move it on for a couple more eyes to look at it before we go to the actual ordinance being published. Any questions or comments or?
I want to thank you for spending all your time doing this. It's a great job.
Likewise. You've put many hours into this, and this is all, this is complicated, and I, no, it's, it's.
I tried to simplify it.
Yeah, I know, but sometimes you get the simple, but you've got to go through complex first to get there. And I just want to share kind of like, may I share kind of my, where I'm at with this?
This is a working session.
Okay, so I sort of try to zoom out of this a little bit and kind of understand, because I've been reading kind of what's come here into council and just talking to people in the neighborhood and looking online, and I kind of get a sense that there's, there's two camps of people that I've heard a lot from, and it's like, I've heard from the, the people who own a residence that they want to turn into an Airbnb or that, you know? And then I've heard from people who don't want that near them. And, and they're both kind of like, if I look at the bell-shaped curve, I have a feeling we're seeing like the two ends of it, but not the middle of it. And that happens, I've seen that happen at times on council with big issues. It's very hard to engage the public enough to get them to come in and tell us what they want. And so we get into this situation often, so then I think, I feel like we're missing that, and I'm a little worried about proceeding without really knowing what people want, because ultimately, that's our job, is to deliver what, we want to organize this in a way that makes sense for the residents. So I don't think we should throw all this out, but then I started thinking, well, what, what problem are we trying to solve? But one problem was that we had illegal Airbnbs in the residential zone that we've since dealt with through enforcement. Outside of that, is to my knowledge, in the commercial zones, we haven't really had any problems with Airbnbs. So it doesn't seem like, doesn't seem, it's not a bad idea to anticipate the future, but it doesn't seem like we're actually having a, a major problem that we need to solve right now outside of, you know, the, the legal ones, which has been dealt with. So that said, I'm kind of proposing maybe an option C+, which is take all this work, don't throw it away, but spend more time engaging the public and get a better sense of what people want. Do they want residential? Do they not want residential? Can we get a good representation of both sides of that? And do we need regulation in the commercial, or is it just a few Airbnbs that are running themselves? We haven't had any issues? Do we want to bother ourselves with the investment in enforcement that it would take to deal with those regulations? And I'm always saying as a question, there's a question, I don't, I, I don't feel like we have enough knowledge to answer them without the risk of creating unintended consequences. So that's kind of where I wound up, but I'm open to ideas.
So I feel that the borough has a right to timely governance on issues, right? So we've been talking about this for 11 months, or what was it, March? So 10 months. And I don't know that we're necessarily going to get any new inputs unless we, we go out and fire the whole town, which I'll do with you if you want to do that. So if that's our intention, fine, but I definitely don't want to come back here in three months and have the same conversation again. So what are we going to do to get those inputs, would be my question. From these options, A is a no-brainer to me. I think that makes better what we already have. What, I know we technically already have some of that written in, but it's not clear. There's a lot of ambiguity. Option B, if, 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 I'm to support short-term lodging in the borough outside of the commercial and industrial zones, I do believe that it needs heavy regulation. I would even take this a step further and put a number on the number of residential properties that we would allow, not just one per block, but like, let's start with five, and if that's not a problem, we can revisit it. But I don't think that starting small is a problem with something like this, because we don't know what's going to happen. And if nothing bad happens, then we can come back. But, yeah, so that's where my thinking is. I support A. I potentially support B, but I think we could go even smaller on the number in the borough to begin.
And do you mean five?
Total for the borough.
Including the commercial. Isn't the, is that what you mean, or just the residential?
I think in, in the residential areas.
Because I think we have about five now. Is that right?
If, if we, no, not in, not in the commercial and industrial, not for short term. We have way more than five if we're counting over 30 days, I think we have.
Okay. But just, just in the, just in the commercial and industrial, do we know?
Two.
Two?
That I'm aware of, yeah.
Okay.
I, I agree with Caroline that pretty much anytime we've had anything, it's probably almost the same amount of people, probably the same people that have come. So I, I don't think we're going to get any more. It doesn't mean that they're interested or not interested, but we have gotten emails in addition to the people who have come. And I like option A. I, I think we need to have it, and we do have it, but I think if you have it in the industrial and the commercial zones, it doesn't present the problem that you're going to get in, in the neighborhoods when you're going to have people that are upset that they have transient people at their next door all the time. And I think that's a big issue. That's a safety issue for people with young children.
And can I add something that regardless of which option, I think it would be really important to clarify, have a statement on our website that just explains that, so that future home buyers, people planning to do this, know in advance what the rule is?
What, can you say what you mean by explain that? What do you mean by that?
Well, I think that like, some of the people who bought homes in residential areas didn't know what the rules were, and our, it's very hard to understand when you kind of comb through the ordinances. And having an ordinance, if we go that way, will clarify it, but it'd be nice to have an FAQ that says, Airbnb, can you have one? These are the basic rules. For more information, see this. I think that would just help to communicate clearly with people.
Yeah, we're even adding keyword tagging to our code of ordinances, so that when you look for like commonly searched, it's not, because I wouldn't go and search for STL.
Right, exactly.
I look for every verb, like where is it? Yeah, yep. Question, Manager Johnson, I'm thinking of it. How often do we update our online code of ordinances? Do you know?
We send them as ordinances get updated.
Okay, but like several times a year? It should be?
Yeah.
Madam President, I looked into that. I have to bring it up. I didn't realize you were going to ask, but it's up to date to 2021, and then there's a separate section that says, I don't remember the terminology, but they're, they're past but pending, waiting to be added to the permanent list of ordinances? And I can look it up right now to clarify that. But for instance, the graffiti ordinance is not included, and I didn't understand why, but maybe that's because it happened in 2023? I'm not sure. And I'm, and because I didn't see the graffiti ordinance, I question if everything that we think is a possibility there is there.
Sure, so what?
I'm not, you know, saying anything, but.
So if we're confident it's up to date, we could probably use ChatGPT to make. So if we're confident it's up to date, we could probably use ChatGPT to make us some nice FAQs.
There you go. Just disclaimer, but you know.
As far as the commercial zones, I do agree that it would be good to have ordinance for that. I know it's not been a problem, but I don't think we should wait till there's a problem and then try to fix it. So if we had an ordinance about them, then that would sort of, it just seems to be more planning ahead better.
And clarity is good. We would be adding clarity.
Right.
Other thoughts?
Well, I feel strongly that we should at least do option A because I think we should call out these specific things that we want in the ordinance before we have a problem. Because let's say we had a problem with parking, all of a sudden a big parking problem at one of these existing Airbnbs. Then we go put in this ordinance, it could be looked at as we're singling out that owner, you know, trying to write some regulation afterwards to, you know, enforce something on them. And it would feel like it's personal. This way it's not because we don't, the things that are in there are not a problem, existing ones. And it's just there in black and white for future people to make sure they, if they're contemplating doing it, they know what they have to do for parking and all the noise and other things. So I think that's important.
So I know, agree. I know I'm talking with Councilperson Finer about this. You know, there's an argument to be made. We can pass A, we can get more public input and then potentially add B. So how are we envisioning this? Like we don't, I think you said Frankensteining it or something, we don't want to have a piecemealed ordinance. So how are we envisioning this? Is it, would it always be one ordinance? Or is, would option A be nested within the commercial industrial parts of the code? Or we would have to update it again?
It's going to be a separate chapter fourteen, no matter what it is, unless we voted for option C. Assuming we vote, we're going to do at least option A, it'll be its own separate thing. Me personally, I'm in favor of option A. I think it's a little premature to do option B. I think we should do option A, let it run for a year and see how it works. And then you can easily overlay an option B after a year. You get some history in here saying, hey, we put that in, they're paying their inspections, things are good, seems okay. And then we have, and then we can bring it back up to the public and to the future council to say, all right, now we want to extend it a little bit. That's just me being conservative because once you go into the residential area, you can't get out, you can't go backwards easily. So I personally would think option A is the best choice. But option B will work. Option B addresses a lot of the concerns of the residential in terms of it. No one's going to come invest and buy a $500,000 house and think they can make it work on ninety nights a year. So you're not going to have that kind of investor. So I think the ninety nights plus the seven night minimum controls the population of landlords, if you will. But I just think we should wait a little while before we do that, but that's just my opinion.
What would this council think of doing a full borough flyering? Hate to waste the paper, but it's really the only way beyond putting it on the ballot that we would get heavy input, provide a survey link and have people vote on it, like put it at everyone's door. Like I want to know, like if we proceed for the next year and we want to collect more inputs, we want to see how it goes. Like what would collecting more inputs look like?
I think a combination of doing, of getting like, you know, online form sort of input with narrative because we could read through them. In addition to like a group, a separate event for that purpose, one or two of those. I think that would provide us with enough knowledge to understand what option B would look like, if people want it, if they don't, and what parts of it make sense. But I think the feeling is generally here that we're not ready for B. You know, because there's not enough clarity on what that looks, you know? We don't want to put the cart before the horse.
Yeah, but I think as this is a working session, it brings up the greater issue of how are we collecting inputs from our constituents? And I know we've kicked it around before, having block captains who, like one person per street, who can, we can call them and they can knock the doors, flyer the doors. Because if we blast an email with a link and we post it on Facebook, we're just, we're not going to get the response. So we would need to go door to door. And that's crazy to me. It's 2025 and if we want to get input from everyone in the borough, we have to go door to door. But I can't really think of any other way that we're going to get a representative data set of people who this is going to directly impact. And then when we get into Yardley Commons is easier, but we have some places like Yardley Point where you can't get in, they won't let you in to flyer. So I guess we could stick them in people's cobbies, but I imagine they're going to be tossed in the garbage. So it's a problem that we have, like how can we collect data from the borough?
And in the past, it's only when we've done things that affect people in a significant way that they only caught wind of it at the very end of the process. And then someone usually does the work for the borough, but not necessarily in a balanced way because they have one strong opinion about it. And they blast it out usually with false information, which then gets people angry and showing up. And that's not the best process, but I think.
I understand that problem with block captains too, probably the, right? I mean, I'm saying that for distributing, distributing.
If we write it, like we write it and they're just helping us distribute it. We're just trying to engage. I think what Caroline's saying, which makes a lot of sense to me, is let's figure out a way to engage people more effectively. I don't know exactly how, but let's try it and see if we can learn to do that. Because things like this occasionally come up that are, they're major things. They can really affect somebody's experience in their house, you know?
What's our subscription number for our email blast? And is it exclusively borough residents?
We have just over six hundred emails.
But we don't know if they're all borough residents.
I would say the majority of them are borough residents.
For what?
Our borough residents.
Oh, I see.
I think part of it might also just be like a really hammered in email blast campaign.
How about a banner across the main street like we do with events?
Well, maybe.
I'm not kidding, actually.
Maybe we should go and get, match up the email addresses we have with the addresses we have and see which ones are missing and try to make it a point to get an email address for every resident. Because then we could use it again and again and again.
We don't even know those email addresses if they're current. I mean, sometimes people.
Well, you do because they'll bounce and then you know on the stats.
It could go to them wherever they live now. So you don't know for sure that they're in the borough.
David Brea's.
And it's just.
Some people are interested that are outside.
And some people don't want to be emailed or don't have. You know, a lot of people are just like, no, thank you, junk mail, you know?
Yeah, and I'm not looking for a hundred percent here. I think if we could, if we could even get fifty percent of our residents on the email list, I think that we could get a really good push, pull, pulse on what people think about.
Is that a door to door thing?
Yeah, I mean, that might be a better way to address it. Instead of doing issue by issue door to door, we go door to door with the email list.
You're going to have to have somebody that can either type it or has really good handwriting because I know from obtaining emails for friends of Lake Afton that people leave me their emails all the time and I can't read their handwriting, so they never get it.
Well, me, David and Ori did it for the sidewalk. We walked North Main Street in two nights last April and we got almost everyone.
Did you, did you handwrite their names?
We wrote it down.
That's what I said.
Right.
I'm not doing it this week, but yeah.
Yeah, and also it could be a paper that goes in on the, there are other things we could do, like the tax bill, we send that out. We can put a thing, go to and put a simple link. There's not even an opt-in on our website, so it's like there's.
We've been trying to get emails for probably ten, fifteen years on our trash bills that go out.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good one.
And people, people don't respond.
They don't respond, but like if you go to our website, there's no like opt-in for the email, right? So we could just do something simple like that. But to be fair, people don't run our. Multiple places, it's hard to get them, but we got the low hanging fruit. But now we have to do multiple things with everyone we get. And we increase the percentage of residents that we have email address, just makes it easier for us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think as many people probably go onto the borough website as we might think.
Okay, but it's one place. It's like, it's like, it's like ten streams of places where we can find people and that's, you know, one of the ten.
So, oh, I'm sorry.
Here's a question because I don't want to be ageist. And I think a lot of people who were born in the twenties and thirties do have email addresses. My grandma, who died at ninety nine, she had one and she answered her emails. But some people might not. Does our email delivery service, like can you push like a voice to text to a landline? Because I know I get that option if I accidentally text the landline. It says, do you want to pay fifty cents to leave this as a voice message on the landline?
I don't know if our service does that.
Okay.
It sounds.
I'm sorry, I'm not quite under, not all.
If people gave us a phone number.
Right.
Could we deliver our email?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
But it'll be like an AI voice speaking out, like Siri would be reading emails. Obviously, it wouldn't help with a survey link, but for some things that would be helpful.
My suggestion is that we should take a multi-pronged, you know, approach to this. So any opportunity, we should brainstorm various different ideas of how to disseminate this question. I guess it's a questionnaire. And that could be everything from the most mundane, me and a banner on the street to texting services, they're not that expensive, you know, putting an opt-in on the website, doing something on Facebook, et cetera, doing a walking campaign. But, you know, we all divvy, we'll divvy it up and everyone will take something to do. And whether maybe it's in their skill set or wheelhouse and we can get this done where we can get. How many would be forty to fifty percent?
Like twelve to fifteen hundred emails, depending if we would want one per household or both adults in the household.
Yeah, typically, I mean, from going door to door, some people, like one person deals with borough emails in a household. So it might be like eleven, they have like eleven hundred houses. So somewhere between eleven hundred and, you know, two thousand.
But to get half, we might already be there, but I think it's a little bit outdated.
Yeah, yeah. Also, I mean, the idea of the texting is a good idea because we could be, although there's the alert system. Do you have a lot of phone numbers where you don't have emails? Because we could call the number and ask for their email. I mean, once we have one piece or we could text the number, there are various ways to try to fill the gaps over time. Maybe it's a, you know, like an intern thing or a volunteer thing that somebody could just, you know, call people. But it, or we could each take ten people that are missing an email and call, you know? Because that's, I think it's a small town, we have to think like creatively how to increase that, but text services.
Can I make one suggestion that we don't?
Just one thing, so just one thing though.
I'm sorry.
Just to, on the, maybe this is a community outreach thing, but text services where you get the phone number and you can text them out, they're very cost effective and people who miss the emails, they get the texts. They're way, they have a way higher landing rate.
Yeah.
I think last time I looked into it, if you're sending a bulk campaign, tax campaign, it's like point zero one cents per tax, like it's very cheap.
Yeah.
If there's no images.
Sometimes you might want, you know.
May I make one more suggestion?
You may.
I'm not sure I heard this, if I'm repeating something that was said, I apologize. But we should probably also approach this as not specific to a campaign, but overall, we want to hear from you in general. And then, you know, if they ask if there's anything coming up, then of course we can talk about the short term rentals. But I think that it would make sense for us to just get out there and say, hey, we really do care. We want to hear from you.
Yeah, step one, get a way to contact people. And then we can engage them on a lot of different topics, not just short term lodging. Yeah, agreed.
I have a question.
Yes.
So tonight, we were going to discuss A, B, and C because it's been eleven months that we've been talking about this. So what my question is, is if you're going to now do a whole new campaign, how many more, are we adding more months to it? Or are we making like a decision to save maybe option A for now? And then B could be done at a later point, once you have gathered that information.
That's what it sounds to me like we're thinking. We want to let the public talk, but I would say one thing. I've already brought up David Brea once, but he said something very good at a meeting one time. Essentially like, if your answer is going to be no, say no now. Do not kick the can down the road and say no in twelve months because you're wasting everyone's time. So I'm good with this, but when we convene on this topic, whenever it is, like let's make a decision. Are we, hopefully, we're not just kicking the can down the road to say no in twelve months, unless that's what the data tells us. But I, if we already all know what we're thinking.
I do know what I'm thinking.
Yes.
I'm a little obvious that way.
Yes, absolutely, and I like that. All right.
Are you open minded to learn what people say?
I am open minded, but I don't like people changing my mind for me.
Hang on.
Thank you.
You've made your opinion very clear and I appreciate that. But are you open, is your mind open to changing? If you learn, if you learn, if you learn from the people who respond doing option B, are you open to learning and evolving your view based on what you learn? That's my question for you. Because you've made your opinion clear and I respect it. But I also think, I also think it's important to have an open mind because what we think individually
I can listen to people, but just listening doesn't mean I change.
You're talking over me while you're saying that you're listening.
Because you keep talking at me.
Well, no, I'm just, I'm just asking if you have an open mind to what you learn.
Of course I have an open mind, thank you.
That's great. Thank you.
So, yeah, let's, Councilperson Fafon, please.
If we do nothing, then it's, the basic difference in my mind is that we continue as we are, but option A just gives the option of the two night minimum, no maximum nights per year. I just want to make sure I understand the difference.
Between A and C?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm a little lost.
The three previous pages, it said all the processes you have to go through, the inspections, the half million dollars of insurance, the notices in the floodplain, all those, those requirements, those would apply to an option A.
Oh, well then.
Scenario. So in other words, it puts some regulations around it, but it doesn't make it preclude businesses that are already doing it. You know what I mean?
Clarification.
It just puts some formality to the regulations around.
I would say the biggest thing that option A does is right now, with the current zoning of ordinances, there is no minimum stay, so you can rent for single nights. And option A would impose a two night minimum in a commercial zone. I think that is the most impactful thing of option A, not even the liability or the licensing or anything. It's, that is the biggest change.
And we would have an ordinance that is called short term lodging that someone could very easily.
And it would be called short term lodging, not tourist home lodging, as it's mentioned in the code of ordinances now?
No.
We might have to throw that in for posterity in the end notes. All right.
I think we should bring back the tourist home, whatever that is, it sounds.
I would love to know what a tourist home is because that's what's currently on the books. So to me, I think option C is not an option since what we have right now is a hot mess and it's pieced together from the current ordinances. We could possibly have debate of whether we want to revise that second bullet of option A. Do we want it to be two? Do we want it to be one? I'm not saying for once, I'm just saying that that should be highlighted because that does affect existing businesses that are operating in a commercial zone.
Do you think that there's, and this is maybe one of those unknowns, but my, just thinking about it, from what I know, do a lot of people stay for just one night? It seems like maybe more likely in like a hotel for a business trip, but not really in Airbnb. It seems like you have to pay for cleaning and you have for one night?
Yeah.
Well, this, so this won't impact the existing Airbnbs, Airbnbs though.
Oh, it won't because they're grandfathered in. Okay.
Oh, that's a good point.
Yeah.
So it doesn't really, yeah.
So, you know, the one that can probably hear our conversation from their back porch right now won't be affected.
That's great clarity.
All right.
All right, so let's open up to the public. And what Don is looking forward to for tonight is a consensus of council to instruct Curtin and Hefner to help us with A or B, or we'll go with C. So we are looking for direction tonight. So would anyone from the public like to come and speak? Yes, please come forward. Yes, and please, your name and your address, if you would.
Do I have to stand or can I?
You can, oh, oh, there isn't a chair.
You can even lay down, I don't care.
That's the special one, it's good luck.
I came here once to talk about my windows before Harp, so, um, I'm Anne Branca. I live at 109 South Main. I own my home. I moved here in 2016 from New York City. I'll give you a little backstory because maybe that will help you better understand where my point of view is coming from. Um, I moved here in 2016. I purchased from the old pastor of the church in town. Uh, I renovated my home. I spent over $200,000 to completely redo it. I love this town. I love living here. Um, I loved seeing us in like the New York Times, coming from New York. I love all that stuff. My kids, I'm a single mom of three kids. Um, so, one of the reasons I wouldn't come to a meeting like this is because I can only come if I don't have my children, and that happened to be this evening. Um, I'm just giving some context things based on what y'all said. I am on the Borough mailing list. Um, I do not receive or am aware, like, it's not present to me of when these meetings are happening. Um, I'm on my computer all day long, every day. I usually read about snow removal and things like that, but some of these things, I personally think slip through the cracks. Um, we do not get this information. I would pride myself on saying I'm very connected to the world. Um, I'm forty-one years old, I don't know if that helps, but, um, and things, I think, a lot of this, to me, I feel like I want this town to be better. I, I, I love seeing new shops, I love seeing restaurants and young people and seeing it on Instagram and just, I like seeing it alive. And I do think, you know, I'm not from here, I'm from Erie, Pennsylvania. Um, I would love, you know, my house is small, it's built in eighteen sixty. Um, my brother has four kids and he can't stay with me. And I would love for him to come for a weekend and, and be on Canal Street or be, you know, not be limited to two Airbnbs or staying in a hotel in Langhorne or, you know, in New Hope, which is far away. Like, that would mean a lot to me if I had space for people to come and visit. Um, similarly to, I know the, in my backyard, when we had the bar that people were worried about, that was up the hill and what disruptions that would cause. Um, you know, I guess this is kind of a comparison. I don't drink alcohol. That would be something to me that I'd be like, "Oh, my gosh, are there going to be people coming down my back hill, rolling into my yard?" Um, and it passed, which was another thing that slept through the, slept, swept, was swept through the cracks. Like, I didn't really know that that, those conversations were going on. But, since that went in, which I don't know what year that was, we, I've never had an issue. I feel like I love hearing the live music and the people enjoying themselves. I have full faith in our town, our police, that if there was a problem, like, that would be, it would be handled, um, that it wouldn't disrupt our lives. And I think the point is that, like, a lot of these things could make people's lives better. And it kind of sounds to me, when I sit and listen, now I haven't been here, but that a lot of the choices are more fear-based of the unknown. And to me, that's not how you evolve a society or a community. You evolve by trying things, putting in temporary input things that can say, "Hey, let's, let's try it for six months, and if there's a problem, then we just don't do it anymore." Or, you know, things like that, that aren't so permanent, um, that affect people's lives. As someone who put a lot of money into my home, um, I travel a lot. Maybe I would love the option to like, "Hey, could I rent a room out?" Like, I'm a very responsible person. There's not going to be like, you know, fraternity brothers in my house partying. The firehouse does get a little crazy sometimes. I live right next to it. It's not going to be like that, but they, you know, I just feel like it could really better our town and being open-minded to at least trying it, sounds like something that, as a younger person who owns my home, who intends to keep my home and stay here, um, you know, I have little kids. I would never want, you know, people, uh, you know, causing, wreaking havoc on our town. And, I don't know, I just, for me, I guess my input is that I think it's worth trying. Um, in terms of communication, like, I really, that's a big one, because I, you guys are all talking and I'm like, "I don't know, how could you better communicate?" Because I do, I get Paul's emails, but I, I've never seen, this maybe is, they're in there. Are these agendas in those emails?
No, we don't send out agendas.
Yeah, or like, when there's meetings, those are in those emails?
No.
I'm not seeing that.
They're not, but yeah.
Yeah, so that's a valid point. Like, I read Paul's emails to know when I have to like not put my trash out, or this is going on, or we're closing this down. Why are we not disseminating the information about these meetings to people to come and be able to speak? Because I, I had no idea, unless my, my daughter goes to school with, um, Kim and that's how I knew that this was going on. So, that's all I have. Thank you for letting me share, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate your insights. Yeah, the email list, um, I think this year, we're going to try to institute some sort of monthly email blast with all the happenings, um, going on in the upcoming month. The issue with like sending three emails a week or something, um, doing more than just trash and whether that people, if they report us, then we get a worse ranking for like spamming them and then we can't deliver any of our emails anymore. So, we're trying, I don't, I almost feel like we need two separate ones. One for like, these are emergency note, well, we have the emergency notification one. But these are like things we want to get to everyone, and these are like, uh, governance-related ones. I don't know if that's...
We can talk, we can talk about that maybe offline. I have some idea, I've done that with hundreds of thousands of emails, and I have a pretty good sense of how to do it. And I think what you were...
You can actually ask people to opt-in, so you could send a thing to the email list saying, "You have to click this button to opt-in, to receive communications," and that might be a way to protect people from...
Yeah. But also, um, it has to do with like, yeah, I don't think I have to get too deeply into it, but, but your point is very well-taken about, you're just, you know, you've got a busy life. This is what I hear, and this is how I think a lot of people are. They have a busy life. And what I heard for four terms now in council, is on council, "Oh, they could have come here at this meeting, this being this meeting," and then the people are like, "What meeting? I don't even know what's going on. How am I supposed to know that? I have a life that I'm managing." So, we have to, uh, respect that reality, that people have limited time to engage. They're not going to just come by Borough Hall and see what's happening unless they have a lot of time on their hands. And a lot of people don't have that. So, thank you.
Other comments this evening?
Hi, um, Kim Rock. Um, I know I sound like a broken record. Um, the, a few things I just want to mention. Number one, I do think you need an ordinance, you know, so I feel like C should be off the table just for even the people in the commercial zone should have some rules to abide by. Um, but the thing I want to mention, why I would encourage you to consider option B, is solely for the fact that, you know, like Caroline said, if you limit it to five even licenses, people do also want options that are not just limited to Afton Avenue and Canal Street. Um, you know, so, some of the people, and I've mentioned before, people that have stayed in my house when it was up and running, people coming for weddings, graduations, funerals, birthdays, anniversaries, retirement parties, things like that, some of those people don't want to be on a busy road. We allow pets, they have dogs, you know, they don't want their dog in a three, third-floor condo on Afton, you know, that might not even allow pets. I allow pets, I have a large yard, I have a double lot, I'm on the canal path, they can take the dog for a walk. I've had plenty of people who really enjoyed that aspect of it. And by limiting to those two districts, you are eliminating some of the people that want that, you know, residential community, for the same reasons that you said it's concerning, are the same reasons that some of those travelers want to be in a quieter zone and a, you know, have a backyard for the, the dog to stay and things like that. So, that is the one thing I would mention, why it could be worth considering option B and just severely limiting the amount of licenses, just, again, to see how it goes, see if there's an issue as opposed to kind of saying, "No, we don't even want to, you know, try it." Um, and then, I do want to remind everyone, too, that long-term rentals statistically are in worse condition than short-term rentals. So, the short-term rentals are, you know, they're relying on five-star reviews, they're maintaining the homes better, they're maintaining the landscaping better, they're staying on top of the general maintenance of the home compared to, a lot of long-term rentals are out of state, out of sight, you know, they don't know what's going on in the house. And, you know, someone said at the last meeting, they had a horrible long-term rental next door. They would welcome turnover of, you know, people visiting, family and things like that, much more than their absentee landlord long-term rental next door. So, that's, uh, you know, kind of the other point to just keep in mind when voting. That's all. And thank you for all the time you put into this. You've put a ton of time into it, and you've really hit on every, you know, comparing municipalities and, um, all the possible key points, and it's very well thought out.
I respond to her, just, well, actually, to both of, both of you who spoke. I just want to share a personal situation. I'm on North Main Street in a small stone house, and my mother-in-law, uh, she wants to come and visit with her grandkids, and she can't because she can't traverse stairs with her hip the way it is, right? And to stay in a hotel is, then she has to be chauffeured around, she doesn't want to be stuck in a hotel. So, you know, we have that need. So, you know, I, I understand personally that issue.
Thank you.
Sir?
Yeah, hi, I'm Dave Kennedy, Look Over Lane, so, a borough resident. And again, thank you for all the, all the work that you've put into this. I've been following it on Facebook, but deciding to get out of my pajamas today and come down.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for putting pants on.
You know, I, I guess, my thinking on this, and I, I think that a lot of residents that don't come to these meetings, but that I've spoken to here and there feel this way, um, is that, you know, option A, I think, is great. You know, we want to encourage commercial activity in Yardley, we want to grow the borough, we want people to come here, and option A allows for that. And if the demand grows, you know, folks want their relatives to stay, folks want visitors to stay, as the demand grows, more Airbnbs will emerge in option A commercial district. So, option A, I think, is, is very much in tune with what the council's been doing and the town's been doing, the business association's been doing to grow the borough. Option B, though, is, is problematic. You know, if, I, I read through the, uh, the ordinances this afternoon, it was a slow day. And, you know, it describes the purpose of the residential zones as to protect, protect the character of the neighborhood and protect the residents from noise, traffic, and nuisance. And if you open up option B and start to allow Airbnbs into what are really residential zones, you, you risk changing the nature of the, of the residents. And some, somebody around here said it was very smart. Once you do it, you can't pull it back. Once you open the door, you can't, you can't unopen it. So, I think option B is very, very troublesome. Uh, there, there are severe limits now on what sort of business activities can take place in the residential zones. And they make sense, you know, they're all small, you can have a crafting business, you can teach piano. You know, those kinds of business activities make sense. But anything outside of that should be in the commercial zone, and it should be concentrated in the commercial zone. And we should encourage development in the commercial zone. So, that's my, my thinking, my two cents, is that option A is great, option C, eh, doesn't do much. But option B, I think, should be a hard no.
Thanks for getting out of your pajamas. Thank you.
Yes, please.
Thank you for the time that you put into all this. Um, as you know, I spoke last time. Um, looking at option A, it's overly generous. Um, I would think if it were to be enacted, it would definitely need longer minimum stays and, uh, uh, maybe a maximum of ninety nights a year. But, um, what's concerning about all of this is, um, as a few folks here have said, option A might lead to an option B. And frankly, if we're going to go down that road, we should consider maybe going the other direction and instituting an option D, which is to, to prohibit, prohibit this altogether. Except for the grandfather properties, of course. Um, I just, I don't want Yardley turning into New Hope. I love New Hope, but it's too touristy and we don't need tons of random people traipsing around here. I mean, it's a quiet town, it's very nice, it's very calm, it's very peaceful. That's why I live here, and that's why I haven't moved to Newtown or many other places I could afford to move to. And that's really, I mean, that's really kind of sums up my feeling on this.
Thank you.
So, I hope that helps.
So, your name and street?
Uh, Brad Levine, 202 Yardley Commons. Thank you.
Any other comments this evening?
Margie Baker, thirty-one, Look Over Lane. Hello.
You emailed us.
I did, I did, and I will not expound in my email, but, um, yeah, I agree with option A. I agree with what these two gentlemen just said. Um, option A, I think, I think you need to have something in place. I think option C is, you can't do nothing. You need to put some parameters in place. Uh, option B, like I said, I'm a native and I know people on our street, for the majority, you know, people have been there for a long time. And it's the pull of that, um, that neighborhood feeling that brings people in and, and keeps them there. And I really hate to see us lose that. And I think, you know, having people there two nights or, you know, just transient people, I think it just opens us up for a lot of issues. Um, and the question also I have is, who does it benefit? You know, who, is it going to benefit, you know, five people against the wishes of, you know, a thousand residents? What, what's the purpose? If you have some, you know, for option A, they can do the commercial, and that is great, you know, it's great, bring people into the town, but kind of limit your risk, um, is where I'm at. So, that's it.
Thank you.
And thank you for emailing us.
You're welcome, and thank you for all your hard work.
Like I said, we love getting emails.
Yeah.
All right, any other, um, comments this evening?
Sharon Lancy, twenty-seven, Look Over Lane. Thank you for having this. Um, one of the things I was really, um, it, it just took my breath away that it's been discussed for eleven months, we never heard about it. That is unacceptable, totally unacceptable. This is a major change. Look at our police chief. He's going to have an incredible amount of work to do, people coming in and out. I know, and I agree with the young lady, um, that said, "A lot of these issues are based on what could happen and based in fear," and I am older, so I, I am concerned. I'm also concerned about my neighbor's little kids, you know? They run around, they have freedom in Yardley Borough. They go to the bus stop by themselves. They go to visit their kids, their friends went fairway by themselves. Who's to say? There's not a, you know, they're not undergoing police. I mean, if you're coming to see a wedding or, um, a funeral, that's not the kind of family members we're talking about, putting them up, you know, with a dog or an older woman with a hip replacement. Who are these people that are going to be coming in for a couple nights? They're all probably going to be fine, except for maybe one. That's all you need, is one child and one predator. And I know you can't run the world by, you know, we could have all these things happen, but we live in Yardley for a reason, like the gentleman said. So, it's young people, it's older people, people know you live alone, they watch you take, walking, hobbling to the trash can. You know, if they want to take advantage of you, they certainly, it's not, you don't have to be watching spy movies or whatever they're called, you know, to see that there are people, a lot of vulnerable people, older people in the borough, as well as young people. So, thank you, rest on it, think about it.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for your thoughts.
Are we allowed to speak just again, or no?
Sure. Typically, at a meeting, the public comment is limited, but this is a working session, so we want lots of input. So, please speak again.
Come on back up.
Yeah.
Anne Branca, one oh nine, South Main. So, um, not to cross-talk or anything, because I don't want to get into like that type of a discussion, but my kids are, I have twin boys that are six, and I have a daughter who is nine. I live at one oh nine, South Main, so right next to the firehouse. I do not let my children, as it is, outside without parental guidance. I don't know what age group we're talking about here. Um, as it is, I get foot traffic, I get people walking. I want to fence my entire yard in because I get people in my backyard. Um, I may be more hyper-vigilant than others in terms of my children, but I don't think that, I, I do understand the point that having people in town that we don't know could pose a further risk, but there's already that risk because we have a train station where people who I see daily, I sit at my bay window and watch work for eight to nine hours... people who I see daily, I sit at my bay window and watch work for eight to nine hours a day, and watch people who I don't know walk past my house. I don't necessarily think we can approach this topic from that point of view because that already exists in the world that we live in. We also live in a very different world than we did 20 years ago, where most people aren't just letting their kids go outside. I don't, you know, I just think, again, I agree with the woman who just spoke, that coming in at this point where there's already three options and we didn't have a chance to even like give input on that feels like, oh my gosh, we're going to make a decision, you know, that affects people that have invested a lot of money already in this town. Like, me putting the money I put into my house to repair that house, it was in disrepair, like, it would have fallen apart. And when you have people coming in, as Kim had mentioned, I feel like when you have an Airbnb, you really are putting money into this community where there aren't grants, there aren't things to help us keep my historic home going. Like, I'm doing that on my own as a single mom who doesn't get child support, I want to love this town and take care of it. So I think it's just hard to say that it's like, it hurts, it hurts my heart to hear it painted as like, it's going to be this horrible experience because it could also be an amazing experience for this town. And I just feel like the last point I kind of wanted to share and just really reiterate is that I think it would be unfair to not give it a chance, even just to the people who have already invested their time and energy not knowing the ordinances that we're involved in this town because they're, you know, it's not clear to us where to find that stuff, but, yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. First of all, I did want to mention that you should contact either the representative's office or the senator's, state senator's office, there are programs in Bucks County in Pennsylvania to help homeowners with those issues that you were speaking of, so you're not entirely on your own. Second thing is, you live in, on a street that's, you know, it's a busy street, and you knew that moving into that area, but I'm not holding that against you, I'm just making a factual point. I would agree that, you know, I'm just doing some research while we're sitting here, just to make sure I have covered those areas of research, and, yeah, Airbnbs could poke a hole into the community's fabric, and me, myself, I'm more inclined not, you know, to go with option A, but I don't know if we're having those kind of issues, and I hate to put the chief on the spot, so you don't have to answer this, but just rhetorically, have we seen an increase in, you know, criminal activity based on rentals, whether they're short-term or long-term? And can we, I don't think we can even, legally, if we can demand that there's criminal checks on individuals that rent or purchase homes. So I would think that, personally, I would look at option A, because I understand if we go with C, which is the, excuse me, B, that would set a precedence that, again, we may not be able to get back out of, I'd rather take the safe route. But I'd like to act sooner than later because we don't have, I don't feel we have enough on the books at this point, and I would rather not take that chance.
Enough Airbnbs?
Say that again?
Enough Airbnbs?
I don't think we have anything on the books that covers what's in option A at this point, and I'd rather vote on that sooner than later, especially of the 11 months that we've invested in. And thank you, I didn't say this earlier, but Dawn, thank you for your hard work. I don't really have much else to say.
Yeah.
It sounds like we're looking at potentially doing an option A now, and then a deeper dive with more engagement to the community in consideration of learning what we need to learn to have a better understanding of pursuing option B, whether that's yes, no, or modification.
Yeah, and I would like to kind of lock ourselves into a timeline tonight, just because I'm really a big fan of transparency to the public on, you know, what's the timeline? When can we expect an update? When's the next meeting about this going to be? I will give a quick side note on, last time we did a major all-borough survey, we thought it was going to be a slam dunk, I wasn't on council, you were. It was about a playground, and everyone was going to want a playground, and I think we got
Nope.
60% of the borough responded to the survey, and it failed fabulously, like, I think only like 7% of people or something voted for it, I'll have to look back. So, we never know what we're going to get, this is something super, seems super unpopular, it might do well, you just never know, so I
Can I say one thing about that? Because having remembered that, part of what happens is that different mediums get different results. So you may be on Facebook and you get one group, and then you're on a survey and you get one group, and then you're in person and you get another group. So you really have to do like multimedia engagement to get an idea, and it may not be perfect, but at least you have different opportunities to engage the different types of people who like to communicate in different ways.
I would just like to remind everybody that even if we choose option A, whether it be just for tonight or permanently, it doesn't mean that we don't have Airbnbs and we couldn't have more in the commercial zones.
Yeah, and I just want to
So, you know, there are Airbnbs here for people that want to have someone stay in the borough, we have them already, and they can expand in the commercial and industrial zone.
Yep. Yeah, I want to clarify, you bring up a good point, too, like, if we decide tonight, what are we doing tonight? We're not voting. This is a consensus of council to have our solicitor rewrite what Councilperson Carlson wrote, and then we can vote on that, and then that starts the advertisement period, that then we can have a final vote, right? So, well, then we got to send it to planning.
What I wanted to do is, because we had already voted to have the solicitor do a draft, and they did the first draft, and these are minor changes, so I'd like to come away with air, being able to go give them tomorrow these minor changes, have him make that be the draft, and then, not wait for another meeting, and then have that draft, maybe I review it first or a couple of us review it, and have that draft go to the two planning commissions, so get that ball rolling for their inputs on that. And if we get their inputs in February, then do the official vote and vote to oppose, or whatever you call it.
Yeah, and why we're doing this is we didn't want to spend money rewriting option B stuff that we worked on.
Right, that's, yeah, that's why I didn't go to them and rewrite it, just in case we went off to C.
But I thought we wanted to know tonight which option we're all
That's what a consensus is all about.
Majority are in favor.
Yeah, so that, yeah, so the consensus is just essentially, do we have consensus of council? This is what I asked, we have consensus of council to move forward with the solicitor working on option A and sending it to planning for comment, not voting to enact it at this time, but consensus to move it forward. So if anybody does not feel good about that, speak now. Okay. Timeline for the email ramp-up, I'm going to suggest I'll work on this. Councilperson Stump and Councilperson Cher with Community Outreach, would you like to work on this with me, building up our email address list, and we will report back on our efforts at the next working session on the 18th of February, and then try to launch the survey in March. Does that sound doable to everybody?
And what are we doing the survey for? Option, are we, did we
General.
Just a general, so, okay.
Can I suggest maybe, this sounds like a community outreach thing?
Yep.
Right? Maybe
Jared, Michelle, our community outreach.
That maybe at the next meeting, community outreach, bring a plan on how to engage the community on this, instead of trying to figure out what that plan is now.
Oh, yeah, on this, sure, but I think we should not wait and start working on our, building up our email list, though.
Oh, yeah.
That work can begin ASAP, because we're going to need that before we can send any survey out or any
Regardless.
So that's what Jared, Michelle, and I will work on in the next month, and then you all can also, whenever you're ready, present on how we want to build engagement around short-term lodging. Do I have consensus on that plan?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Anything else tonight on this?
Can I just mention that our council agendas are posted by 24 hours before the meeting of every meeting? So our website is very clear, you can go on the website all the time. I think, I think residents have to take some initiative and start looking and be involved in the town. The minutes are on the next day after they're adopted, the minutes give a pretty detailed what happened, so people could know what's going on in town if they start looking. But just sitting at home and just waiting for emails, you're not always going to get the information. But our agendas, by law, have to be posted, so start looking, and if anybody has questions, do you know where we're at?
And the meetings are on YouTube, you can always watch.
But, but at the same time, since we have an email system, I think we should talk about sending them out, because, like, I'm a subscriber of
It's both and.
In other towns, where I actually get their agendas by email, it's kind of interesting to look through it, but I would never go on and like proactively try to find out, because people are busy. So if you know it's coming, you know, again, different people have different styles.
Sure, no, I get it.
And so we need to
I think it's important that people also have to take some type of initiative, like, we can't hold hands with everybody, everybody, you have to start looking, be involved.
Yeah, and I think the biggest thing with that is, both sides of that, is anytime that I write something and put it on my councilwoman page, it's biased, right? I, I'm a voting member, I have an opinion on things, like, it's twinged, it's tinged a little bit with my bias, and it's really hard to put things out there from the borough that, you know, aren't weighted one way or the other. And that, I, so, yes, we'll work on sending more emails, we'll get more community input, but doing your own research is really important, and not just accepting the bulleted version on the agenda of what we're going to be talking about, but digging in and finding out, like, what history has been on it, looking at what other towns are doing is important, so that you can form your own opinion and you're not basing it on, you know, what one person comes and tells you about it. Anything else on, yes?
I will just point out, 24 hours notice on the website is a lot of notice, though, because, excuse me, I did check at the beginning of the month to see if there was going to be another meeting about this, and I didn't see anything. I only found out about this like a day or two ago, and the only reason I knew to look for is because I had been at the last meeting. If I hadn't been at the last meeting, probably wouldn't be here like most of the town.
So, yeah, 24 hours is the law in Pennsylvania, and most of the time, we don't know what we're discussing until the Friday before, because that's how the business items come together. So, we submit things to the packet, I don't know what Michelle's submitting, I don't know what Jared's submitting, I get the packet, oh, here's what submitted. Like, I get a little more notice than everyone else because, you know, I'm president and I'm, you know, helping put it together, but that's how things come together, Friday. Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it goes to us on Friday.
So, as an elected official, I get 96 hours notice, and so my notice was Friday at the end of the day. I also work full-time, this may be a shocker, but we don't get paid to be up here, we all have outside jobs. Monday, sorry, David, we were going to tell you that, we were going to tell you that at the next meeting, I know you were banking on this.
So you don't get attention, right?
So in this specific instance, okay, yesterday was a holiday, so I got it at end-of-day Friday. I actually, then, if there was something I wanted to add to the agenda or that needed to be changed, or, oh no, that wasn't ready, I actually, there is, my hands are completely tied because I can't notify Manager Johnson unless I bother her at home, which, people actually were texting me yesterday, asking to bother you at home, to ask you if you knew what contractor Laura Makefield used to salt their roads. I opted not to bother you at home.
I'm going to call Laura Makefield.
And this was also resident of Laura Makefield.
I will say, Mr. Levine, this is progress, so up until two years ago, there was no limitation on when we could update the agenda, so my first year on council, I would walk into council chambers, and someone would turn to me and say, I added something to the agenda. And then I'd be asked to vote on it, and I was like, I didn't read anything about it, I don't know what this is. I mean, we didn't all get along very well, so that was part of it. The 24 hours is better than it used to be, so, we're making progress in Pennsylvania. All right, anything else on this topic? Anything else on any other topics?
Just that, as, we're residents of this town, too. We're, I found out tonight I'm not being paid for this, so why are we here? Well, it's not for the glamour, it's because I want to see, you know, improvements to my town, I want a better quality of life for the residents, and so the things that you care about are essentially the same things that I care about and everyone else here. And so there's a lot of thoughtful, you know, a lot of time and thoughtfulness put into the work that we do as best as we can. And I just want to assure you that if you see me on the street, which I'm out there all the time,
Okay.
You can stop me and ask me a question. I think to Caroline's point, excuse me, and President's point, that, you know, I may have my own opinion about things, but I'm also careful to point out that I don't represent all the opinions of people in council or the borough itself, but I'm happy to speak to anybody at any time, and I think anyone here would do the same thing.
Yes, we love hearing from residents. A lot of meetings, we have zero people here, we'll work on getting more information out, but we don't want to talk to each other, we want to talk to all of you, so please come to meetings. Okay.
Can I say one thing also?
Yes, one more thing.
Well, I want to appreciate everyone who came here and shared very well-thought-through ideas about this, all different, and to me, that's so helpful, because we learn what you're thinking and what the problems are, and what, there may be blind spots that we don't see. And so you all made the time to be here, and it's greatly appreciated.
All right, any, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilperson Segal Morris, seconded by Councilperson Cher. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Meeting adjourned. I don't know what